I used to.
There we go. All right. I think we should be good to go.
Apparently.
All right, we're gonna call to order at six ten. And we have no guests here today, so we'll pass right over public comment. Approval of minutes was sent out a couple days ago. And does anybody have any changes to the minutes? We're seeing no changes to the minutes. The minutes are approved on July sixteenth, two thousand and five. And on to library reports.
Okay, um, so, um. For our adult programs. Our new library assistant Caitlin hosted a mocktail program, so there was no alcohol, it was mocktail. Um, it's something that I personally have always wanted to do at the library, so I'm so excited that she was able to pull it together. Um, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to attend, but.
And it did get, I, I had a couple people mention that they had an awesome time and I did mention it to her.
Great, great, yeah, she, um.
Feedback.
I, as far as I can tell, she went above and beyond, like she had like recipes printed out and like everybody got to make a drink, you know, it was. Sounds like it was a huge success. Um, we've actually received multiple requests to do a follow-up second program. So she's looking at maybe trying to do something closer to the holidays, like for New Year's. Um, uh, the, uh, library assistant is also planning a lot of great upcoming events, including a sourdough making class on September sixth. Um, and a sound healing event on September eleventh. Um, and we're investigating possibly doing that like a digital, um, chocolate program for closer to the holidays too. So, um, so she's hitting the ground running, we're doing great. Um, we didn't have anything for correspondence. Um, friends of the library met on Wednesday, August thirteenth. Um, they voted to approve a tree to be planted in memory of Julie Culp. Um, with funds that were donated by friends and family. Uh, my understanding is that it's going to be a pink dogwood and it's going to be planted. On the like front side of the library, on the Route two oh seven side of the library. Um, I'm gonna check in with town hall and make sure that all of the like approvals. Are in line and that we have permission to do that, so, um, I will be following up on that. Uh, for meetings, um, I attended a virtual meeting with Don LeValle. Um, at the state library to get details on the new required library policy updates and language. Um, so in, I believe it was in June, uh, the state legislature passed, um. I think a rather large bill, but as part of that bill was, um. New stipulations for public libraries that we must adopt, um, certain specific library policies. Um, including a request for reconsideration policy, a library programming policy, and a library display policy. And each of these policies must include very specific, um, language. Um, and also have a process that's detailed in the policy whereby members of the public can. Like challenge or request reconsideration of, um, library materials, including displays and programs as well. So, um, I've been working on going through our policies and updating them and adding the, the now legally required language. Um, uh, the state library provided sample policies that, um, meet the minimum requirements. So I've been using a lot of their sample policies and kind of, um, meshing them with our existing policies. Um, so that the, the, we must do this because it's required by law, but the other piece of it is that. Um, uh, we must be compliant because if we're not compliant, we do not qualify for any of the state aid grants. That we get every year, so, um, I think on average we get about three to four thousand dollars from the state library. Um, in terms of like CCAR reimbursements, um, and, and other state aid grants that we get from the state library. So if we don't do this, we will not be compliant and we will not receive those funds. Um, the deadline to submit are, um, up, they, they don't have to be approved by the library board. They have to actually be submitted and reviewed and approved by the state library. Um, prior to then coming back to the, the library for broad board approval. So we must submit our updated policy, um, policies by October first. The state library will review and, uh, either say that we need to make changes or approve the policy packet that we submit. Um, by November first, and then at the November meeting, we will bring it to the full library board to vote for approval. Um, and then after it's voted, um, either yay or nay, uh, we would then need to submit the draft. November meeting minutes to the state library by December first, so it is a pretty tight deadline.
Will you be able to make the, uh, eleventh at four thirty?
I guess I should be able to do that, yep. Um, and like I said, I have.
Get your email.
I've been working on.
Yeah.
I've been working on.
I figure we're gonna need at least.
Updating the language and everything, um, um, so that.
That's the bottom.
I'm trying to, um, to expedite the process a little bit so that we, you know, we don't, yeah, um. So that's, uh, update for meetings. For, um, for grants. Um, I submitted additional documentation requested, um, for our E-rate fiber net, fiber internet, um, discounts. Um, as far as I can tell, this was all like very rapid, um, and very sudden. So as far as I can tell, the documentation was accepted and we have been approved for one thousand ninety-seven dollars in funding for twenty twenty-six. I'm gonna follow up with the state, um, E-rate coordinator to confirm this, um, and to, um. Figure out what the next steps are. So this has been an ongoing process. I've been doing a lot of this from at home. Um, on maternity leave, um, so it's good to be back so that I have access to all of my documents in my computer, my emails and everything.
Um, and speaking of, so you're back back or?
I am. Jump, that's under personnel, I mentioned that, so. I, I am back three days a week right now, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight hours a day. Um, and starting September, the week of September first, I will be back full-time, so I'm kind of easing into it a little bit. Um, it's been, huh, it's been good. I'm, I'm super happy to be back. Um, thank you to everybody for giving me the time to, to be home to spend with the baby and, um. I'm very excited and very happy to be back, very tired and very stressed and.
Welcome, welcome.
Yes.
Welcome to motherhood.
But. So it's good to be back, um, so I'm like, it's been a whirlwind couple of days, I'm trying to like catch up with everything and, um. You know, uh, do things that, that, um, like I had to put in a magazine order, which I traditionally do in July. But it's getting done in August this year and just little things that I'm trying to like, you know, complete and finish and catch up on and, um. So, um, so far so good, um, so.
Glad to have you.
Um, and I have, of course, I have pictures, people want to see pictures, but, um.
You can send us a slideshow.
Yeah.
Love it.
Um, so, um, for children's programs, um. Two hundred and thirty-three kids have registered for summer reading so far, um, so I'm, that's a really good number. I think we might have had two hundred and fifty total last year, so we're really close, um. The last day of summer reading will be September fifth, um, and we will draw names for, um, at least the adult program. We're doing a gift card to Trigo, um, in Will and I Dick. Um, is it pizza? The owners are, are, it's a family from Lebanon.
Straight.
Um, it got, was highly recommended and the owners are from Lebanon, so.
The old regimes building, I think.
Oh, rage change that, okay, that's like, okay.
Half of the whole building, they live upstairs.
Okay.
Um.
It's my favorite.
And that's really good. Sally's the pizza.
Yes, they're, they have new locations.
Oh, they, they're just.
I think.
Or they must have expanded, cause I went to the, we, my husband and I went today to their regular site on Wester Street.
They have a new, sorry, off topic, um, but Sally's, I think they have a new, um, location in Weathersfield on the Silas Highway, in case you're interested.
Okay, you don't have to go all the way to New Haven.
But, uh, okay, so children's programs, um, Reader, Read Rock and Rhyme has been incredibly popular. Their summer, we're averaging more than eighty people every week, so hugely popular. Um, recent programs, um, include a, a paper mache program on Friday, August fifteenth with Maggie. A chemistry and color program, um, with Lebanon resident Kira Patel. Um, they're a longtime volunteer family here at the library, Aiden also comes in every week and he's been doing a lot of work with the three D printer. Um, and, uh, three D printing class with, uh, Lebanon resident John Flager, so, um. Lots of stuff going on in the children's department. For facilities, um. There is some water damage, uh, to the exit doorway that's located in the stairwell. Um, that's like between the, the floors, um, that was noted by the interim director, um, I did, uh. DPW has been notified and is looking into installing a drain to collect, um, the overflow. The water overflow from the gutters, I think what's happening is, um, it's located at a point where like multiple, um, points of the roof. Come together and it collects and it's, it's too much water for the gutter, so it's actually jumping the gutter when we have a heavy rainstorm. It actually like jumps the gutter and then goes down, um, and the water is kind of getting trapped in an L. On the exterior of the building and it's not, it, there's no slope, so it's staying right in the corner of the building there, so.
Catch it now, ice.
So we're working on, um, coming up with a solution to improve the drainage there. Um, there have been some issues with the security camera feeds on the church side of the library. I think it's actually possibly this camera on the corner right here, um, and so town, I contacted town hall. Cause they have cameras as well, um, town hall recommended a service technician and I called him, um, this morning to. Follow up and see if he might be able to come out and take a look at, I think it's related to some power outages that we had the last couple of weekends. Um, so I'm hoping it's a simple fix, but I'm working on trying to fix that. Um, we covered the personnel, um, no info, updates for volunteers. Um, for landscaping, I did notice that, um, the invasive, the creeping Venka, um, which is highly invasive. Um, has been removed from the front of the library, so.
And by the gardener?
By, I'm assuming by, um, yes, the, uh, Victory is the master gardener who works for the towns part-time seasonally.
Cause she was definitely on my, uh, my, my questions, um. Because the town hall, to me, had a lot of crabgrass in their gardens and I was wondering if she was still, uh, on, you know, working.
Yes, and I think she has a limited number of hours, so I don't know if she's able to do extensive weeding, I know a lot of.
What about the creepy bushes along the windows on two oh seven, like your, the bushes are really starting to come up. Like, like the. Next year and the year after, they will be covering your windows, like, they're so close to the building.
They are, on this side, I noticed them too.
They're really, like, they're coming to a point, the new growth, um, yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't know, obviously, that's probably not, maybe what she does. I mean, the senior center, uh, there, the town plans, you know, to have all these bushes and landscaping things done. With no follow-up maintenance, and we literally had to have volunteers, I'm not kidding, cut shrubs. Because they were completely covering like nose and.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
I will, I will look into that.
Silly.
Um.
I was ready to go out there, but I didn't know if I'd be.
Might have to.
Yeah, I'll help you in the future.
I know.
And it was, it's pretty weedy up there too, I do this.
Very, it's very.
Do, do we know what those are? They almost look like the roses sharing, but just from the road, I can't.
There is, um, there is a landscaping plan, so I will try to find out what those are.
I mean, cause you could, you could, I cut mine.
Yeah, way down and they end up.
Okay.
Bad. I don't think they are Rosa Sharon, uh, unless you get a hybrid, they're invasive also.
Yeah, and they would be flowering right now.
They would be.
You would know if it was a rose of Sharon, I don't think it is.
And the parking spot, I see, uh, do they get rid of the permeable?
I, my understanding is they put it over the top and it's gonna like settle in.
Okay.
Um, and I also noticed, cause I'm apparently completely oblivious, uh, that the sidewalk has been extended and there's the crosswalk.
Yeah, I was just wondering, my next question was if you have had any feedback on that at all.
Um, I have not had any verbal feedback, but I, I actually left the library this morning during, um, the Read Rock and Rhyme. Which is our, one of our busiest programs, um, and so that is one of ours where we do have overflow into the, um, Alden Tavern parking lot. And that crosswalk was amazing because we had a lot of parents with small children that were crossing right there. Um, so that, that was.
I'll be definitely interested in if you hear anything.
A big, um, improvement to what it was.
Okay, that's.
I make a pitch at probably every other DTC meeting, when are we gonna get the crosswalk with the flashing lights?
Uh.
And I, I'm just like, I'll be a pest.
There's no, yeah, right now, as far as planning and zoning goes, that of talk of, of blinking lights.
No, but I'll just.
No.
Yeah, it would be nice. Yeah.
Baskin.
Um, for circulation, um, we had five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. Um, checkouts for the month of July, um, uh, that's up from June. Um, it is slightly less than July last year, but the whole rest of this year, we've actually been, uh. Every single month, I think we've been higher this year than we were last year, um, so we took. In comparison to last year, July, we're slightly, we're slightly lower than last year, but every other month has been higher, so. Um, uh, our door counter, um, we're, we're starting to collect a significant amount of data from our door counter, which was installed in September. Um, and I believe when I was like approximating how many people we, I think I estimated we're getting about a hundred and twenty people a day. Uh, this summer, we've been well over two hundred, every day, every day, um, some days.
And that includes people going just to the bathroom, right?
It does, it does, but I count that as a service that we provide, so.
Okay.
Um, um, and we have to have the door counter there because it captures all the people that come to the program room.
Yeah.
Um, if we moved it further into the building, like we would miss the Read Rock and Rhyme people that come.
Sure.
Just for this, you know, just to this room for that program, so it has to be located closer to the front door.
And like you said, it's still a service.
Um, and I have to pay for the toilet paper.
I know, you might have thought, count them, that's true.
You know, it is a significant service that we provide to the town, so. Um, for computers and technology, um, CEN has completed, uh, installation of the fiber internet lines to the library. Um, so I believe they are now coming from town hall across the street to us. Um, we have received a certificate of completion for this work, the next steps will be to install the hardware and devices inside the library. Um, which should be scheduled shortly, um, I've also been in contact with Northeast Technology. Um, to coordinate with CEN when they're gonna turn on the fiber internet service. Um, which I'm hoping should be somewhere towards the end of September. Um, so things are moving along, um, which is good, that's been a long process.
I'm coming.
Um, no updates for continuing education for next month, um. I kind of already mentioned this, the library assistant Caitlin is planning several programs for fall and winter of twenty twenty-five, including the sourdough program, chocolate program. And the Sound Bowl Meditation Program, um, library staff are gearing up for library card registration month in September. Um, and for kids to return back to school, um, and I'm hoping that the fiber internet installation will be completed by the end of September. So.
Is there a way to log on to find out when our card expires?
Hey, I just wrote down library card renewal with a question.
Maybe that could be also a, a little side focus is, hey, check your renewal.
Yes, cause I have no idea.
Yeah, can log into your, your account online, um, one of the ways is, is you can get that Acorn app. Uh.
On the bottom, it says we're near.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
This is how you request books.
It, it, if you, if you're app savvy, the app is really, cause you can do everything in the app.
It's from.
Yeah, Acorn app.
So it's different.
And it's pretty easy to use.
Yeah.
So, if you're not like, if you, if you're not huge into apps, of course, you can always call us, we love to talk to you on the phone too. Um, so that's what I have for my.
Okay, I have a couple of things, um, so I have been getting on the Association of the Connecticut Library Boards. I highly suggest everybody to do that, just about everything that we do here. Uh, is on there and guidelines to help us do it.
What is it called?
It's the Association of Connecticut Library Boards. Uh, a couple of things that I did notice that a lot of the links even for, uh, training or. Uh, it definitely didn't work, I got that four oh four dozen exist code thing, so I thought that was interesting. Uh, I know we did talk about when it's an election year and new trustees come on. That we would have kind of a welcome packet, um, I think, uh, when I come back from vacation, I do want to work on that a little bit. I do think it will be helpful.
Yeah, I had actually last week talked, cause I had said I would do it and then it was like, well, what are we going to include in it?
Sure, there were some great ideas.
But then I, um, oh, okay, and then I just said I would call and I would call people.
Links and, you know, um, yeah, there were some advisable things on there, um. And then, you know, I talked about, we've, for years have, have talked about strategic plan. And during, uh, the personnel, uh, evaluation. Uh, updating we've been doing, there was a line item on there about, uh, long range and short-term goals. And we were like, and about working with the board and. And then, so reading, continuing reading this week, I, I did come upon that. So if I can ask you to maybe help clarify, to treat the strategic plan that. You talked about and then when you first got on.
Yes.
Um, and then did you, is that part of that class that, that class, but the. We paid for, to go to, um.
So we, we went through a strategic planning process, we do have an official strategic plan that's posted on our website.
And how long does that?
That's good through, it's four years, so twenty twenty-seven, and then we'll be repeating the process, so we'll revisit it in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, cause it didn't say, you know, on this, uh, website, you know, it talked about it and. It, in, would that be as far as the long range and the short-term goals? Because it was separate, but in the kind of same area, so I just wasn't sure if that's.
Yeah.
That would cover us, like.
Yes, yes, I think absolutely, like if, and you're talking about like board goals and.
I mean, we kind of were like, well, following the handbook and reading on what we do.
Yeah.
You know, so we're like, do we have long range and, you know, besides the strategic plan?
Yeah, was it our responsibility, it was, it was the board, like in the, in that particular section. It's, it asked, it said that, it made it sound like we set the goals.
Right.
That the board of trustees set the goals and you would work with.
Right.
Us, instead of like us working with you.
Right.
And that was how we had the.
It can be kind of tricky because there's different types of boards, um, in Cana, there's like some, some boards are advisory. Um, and then some boards are governing and you guys are a governing board, um.
Through municipality also, so that also I noticed reading made a difference on, uh, quite a few things.
Yeah, um, so, so you guys have, uh, direct responsibility of hiring the director. Um, you have to like oversee, um, like any policy changes, you oversee like and approve the budget. Um, I, I kind of act in an advisory role for you guys, um, but that's, I mean, you are a.
Interesting coming onto the board, uh, you know, eight years ago.
Hmm.
Uh, really, uh, that's what really kind of got me going about, you know, this orientation letter thing, it really, you know. I didn't know what I was doing before, you know, so.
Yeah.
You know, I hate to say that it's taken me eight years to really.
It's taken me a long time and I still feel a little unsure.
I've really been going to that and reading the handbook, um, they clarify a, a lot of things.
They.
Or at least.
For that association.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And also, I'll put it out there, I think traditionally, somewhere in November, the ACLB. Um, will offer like a virtual, um, like board basics, um.
I think we've seen that.
And I've shared that out with you guys before, um, and I think they do it normally in November because it's election. So they figure if there's any newly elected board members, it's good, that's a good time to offer.
November is very though hard, you know, as far as the election and then having the next meeting and. Yeah, there's a lot and then coming up with, uh, our standing committee, you know, in our elections and. Yeah, the order of that, um, still is tricky every year.
Yeah. So, and we're gonna have to add the policies to, um, to the November meeting too, so.
Yep, okay, thank you. That is all I have for you.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Other questions or hearing?
Um, I just have, as far as the tree, it's a Coussa, a pink Coussa dogwood.
Oh.
Oh, because, um, they're disease resistant whereas regular dogwoods are susceptible. So it is a Coussa dogwood and it's gonna be quite large, they're, you know, they're gonna put in something about eighteen feet.
Hmm.
Um.
Oh, that would be the size of it going in.
Yes, so. They're, they're big ones, they're coming, you know.
And then it grows. And we know it's been approved by the historic district.
I don't know, Dennis is on that committee, I don't know, I think, I think they did present to the town, so I think it should get in motion and probably be.
This was the first time.
Put in, in like September, right.
Heard of it, I'm gonna follow up on it and make sure that we're all good.
Okay.
I think that's.
Thank you.
Gonna be a nice tree.
We're gonna move on to standing committees. Uh, there's nothing for budget and B is bylaws. And we've set a date for, uh, nine eleven, four thirty P M, that will be downstairs. Reading room for that, and we will talk about, uh, everybody on that, uh, standing committee has been emailed. Uh, what you sent me, um, so let's see, just, you know, read it over and we'll come to that meeting. Um, my guess. Is maybe we'll have to make one last quick meeting before, you know, you send that out, you're saying it would be sent out by email, right? Uh, by the October first.
It's a, yes, it's a, and I have to send her, um, the, there's the checklist, um. And which I will, I will, I will triple check all of our policies to make sure that we match all the requirements. Um, so there's a checklist and then we have to send her the, the packet, we can't.
I'm okay, it's, it sounds like fine because just submitting it and then getting feedback, you know, it takes a little pressure off of us. Cause we could make changes, you know.
Right. I mean, one of the final, one of the nice things that I noticed, and this isn't all of the policies, but, um, the, um, collection development policy. That, that the state library is using as like the sample is the Avon library collection, and that's what ours is based off of. So really like the language differences are minimal, um, we do not have an existing. Um, we do not have an existing programming policy, so we, I basically just took the state library one. Um and then.
That was another thing about that um Association of the Connecticut Library Boards, they have one particular area where oh my gosh, there must be, you know, twenty-five, thirty uh topics that they have like links to and so the more we develop policies. Yeah. So, um alright, anything more comments for bylaws at that point? Um the personnel, uh our next meeting will be the day before nine eleven. September ten. Yeah, and we've been um updating the director evaluation form. Uh really, last year, but really goes back even a couple of years, we've questioned a lot of uh repetitive kind of statements, so they've just been updating the form and.
Making it much simpler.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's going well. Um our specific goal will be, I'm gonna send out what we semi-finalized at our last meeting. Uh I'll be looking for typos and uh some people probably have maybe different notes than I had in wording and whatnot, so please make those recommendations to me. And I will set a special meeting thirty minutes before our next September meeting because we will not um the, we don't send out the evaluation form because we're actually hoping to have the ratings also done. So thirty minutes before, we will have a special meeting. Uh last year, nobody came to it, so they must have trusted us, which is fine. Um but we do at that September meeting have to break out into executive session to just approve uh what we did. And then October, uh the chairman and one other person and I guess I would wanna say maybe uh the co-chairman um could, you know, and we'll talk about if everybody's cool with that. Uh the co-co-chairman would meet with Lindsay, give her evaluation. Uh she gets it beforehand, so she can come back with comments and so then we'll be done with that. And uh we will um send out staff evaluations as usual uh in private envelopes uh to each one of the staff and get that back. That necessarily doesn't need to be done before the September meeting, just the October one, so. So that's what's up with personnel. Um any questions, any comments? Okay, uh and then nominating committee will be coming up soon.
September.
I think that's with the bylaws.
I have, I have a, Kathy was wonderful when she uh we left. She gave me a um list of things to do, election year, elect until November. So October just talks about, September and October just talk about, uh well, you'll review your budget.
We didn't have it right in the bylaws. Remember the lawyer had to tell us what to write?
Oh, yeah.
It was in existence when Kathy.
Doesn't even.
I think it, I'm pretty sure it's September.
Okay, and I do have uh all the lawyer notes, a special little envelope too. So I'll, I'll take a look at that and see if that needs to be added to the agenda for next month.
Is there a printable brand up to date? Bylaws?
I can print it for you, sure.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on our website, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't wanna print it on my printer. How many pages? Twenty or twenty-five or thirty?
I can print it.
I would love that. I can send you a reminder.
Is there anything particular I wanted to look at or just?
I just wanna, I just wanna throw out the one I have and put in.
Did you wanna pick it up like Thursday, Friday? I I won't be back until Tuesday next week.
I don't care, I just.
Can I get it to you next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Is that acceptable? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, my daycare is closed tomorrow, so I worked Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday today this week, so I won't be here tomorrow. But I, I, if you want, I can like send a request to to the interim director and ask him to print it and have it available for you.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, so I'll get it to you next week. No problem, yeah.
Or I can come here and maybe print it from mine, but use your printer.
Yeah.
Like from my phone.
Yes, or if you talk to Caitlin, I'm sure she can help you. She's very excited.
Yeah, alright. Okay, um I sent out the public meeting contact to everybody, right? I didn't quite know where that fell, maybe new business. But actually, I read something new about new business and I was like, oh, like, so I'm learning. But new business uh technically should come onto the agenda and not just brought up as, does anybody have new business? But we're, you're forgiving me that for now.
And if anybody brings up new business, you have to put it on the next meeting's agenda.
And I, there was somewhere too that talked about um if we wanted to bring up a topic that two thirds of a vote at the meeting, uh we could accept to talk about it. Um so I just wanted to double check, everybody got it and we don't need to talk about it, it is what it is, so. Um alright, so any unfinished business from last month? There are no unfinished business, uh there is no new business. And we can set to adjourn at six forty-seven.
Oh, um it was the email about this, the um.
Stop recording.
Alright, I'm gonna stop recording, hang on.
We've adjourned.
The acorn.